Good evening. Welcome to the January 21st meeting of Troy City Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Tom Kendall. Please stand.
Dear Lord, thank you for continuing to watch over this group, our city, and its citizens. Be with us throughout the coming days. Protect us. Keep us safe as we go about our everyday lives. Bless those who look after us from a safety and health standpoint, and bless our troops who are overseas protecting our nation. In his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Present.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
All members are present.
Mrs. Knight, please read the minutes of the January 6th meeting at Troy City Council.
Minutes of council, January 6, 2014. Ordinance number 01-2014, employing clerk was given first reading and was adopted. There was an executive session. Council returned from executive session at 7:24 PM. The rules of council were approved. There was a motion to elect Mr. Clark as president pro temp and Mr. Phillips as clerk pro temp. Committee reports Building Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing the ordinance of assessment related to the sidewalk portion of North Market Street project. Law and Ordinance Committee recommended the approval of the vacation of easements for the Car Star location. Law and Ordinance Committee reported that committee recommends Troy join other municipalities in opposing the passage of amended substitute House Bill 5. There was an oral report regarding an application for Apple fees. The agenda was amended to add ordinance number 04-2014, following an oral report of the Law and Ordinance Committee. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing the Board of Recreation to advertise for bids for concessions at Paul G. Duke Park. Safety and Health Committee recommended a resolution supporting efforts of the Miami Valley to encourage regional sustainability would be looked at at a future committee meeting. Resolution number R1-2014, opposing passage of amended substitute House Bill 5, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R2-2014, authorizing the use of Internet auctions for sale of surplus materials, given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R3-2014, bid for concession operations, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 02-2014, levying assessments for sidewalks, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 03-2014, approving replat of in-lot 10163, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 04-2014, changing the time for the meeting of the council on January 21, was given first reading and was adopted. Following various comments, council then adjourned at 7:55 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Phillips to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We'll begin the committee reports tonight with the Buildings Committee and Chairperson, Mrs. Lynn Snee.
Thank you, Madam President. This Buildings Committee report is related to the bidding authorization for the Barn in the Park. The committee met on January 13th to consider authorizing bidding for a new lease for the Barn in the Park building. The current lease agreement with Troy Civic Theater for the use of the building has expired. The Board of Park Commissioners has recommended the rebidding of the lease. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners to advertise for bids and enter into an agreement for the lease of the building known as the Barn in the Park. And this is respectfully submitted by Mrs. Oda, Mr. Phillips, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council? You may continue, Mrs. Snee.
Thank you. Our next committee item related to resolution of support related to the rehab of Staunton Commons 2. On January 13th, this committee met to consider the request made by the owner of Staunton Commons 2 that council approves a resolution of support to be submitted with an application for tax credits to rehab Staunton Commons 2. The tax credits for which the owner is applying do not impact City of Troy revenues or expenses. The property is being improved and it's being kept up has a benefit to the neighborhood. We have no objection to providing a resolution of support in this matter and ask that it be prepared. As the owner must submit the application by February 20th, we support emergency legislation. And this is respectfully submitted by Mrs. Oda, Mr. Phillips, and myself as chair.
Any questions from council? Do you have anything further, Mrs. Snee?
I do not.
Thank you. The next report is from the Community and Economic Development Committee and Chairman, Mr. Bill Twist.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, on January 14th, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that the application for a loan in the amount of $470,000 be approved for RNE LLC from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund. The SPD loan would be 16% of the 2.8 million project. This project will result in the expansion of an existing business that has been steady growth over several years, along with the potential for increased employment. The SPD loan would be adequately secured and there is an adequate fund balance for this loan. Additional information regarding this application is discussed in a detailed report if needed. This committee supports the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee and we recommend that legislation be prepared approving the $470,000 loan to RNE LLC as a meeting the intent of the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Program. As is permitted at the discretion of council, we support exceeding the guidelines for the SPD loan funds amount. We further support emergency legislation so that loan can be closed without delay.
And that is submitted by?
Submitted by William Twist, Chair, also John Swazer and Thomas Kendall.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council? Our next report is from Mr. Tom Kendall from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. On January 14th, this committee met to consider recommending the subordination of an existing loan from the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund for Troy Business Park LTD from Fifth Third Bank to People's Bank NA. This loan was made in 2006 in the amount of $411,000 associated with the property at 865 West Market Street. The loan has a current balance owed of $127,611.15. Troy Business Park LTD now wishes to combine all outstanding loans on the property, other than the loan with the city, into one loan. The EDRLF loan was a small part of this project. Recommendation: consenting to the subordination does no impact on the city's EDRLF loan, which is adequately secured. We recommend that legislation be prepared approving the requested subordination of the EDRLF loan of Troy Business Park Limited from Fifth Third Bank to People's Bank NA, understanding that the closing of the bank financing is pending and the approval of the subordination of the city's mortgage is required before the closing can take place. We support this as emergency legislation. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Are there any questions from council on this report? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
I believe the Law and Ordinance Committee has a liquor license application to read this evening.
We do, Madam President. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of the application for a new D5 permit for Todd M. Uller, I don't know if I say that right, DBA Basil's on Market for 18 North Market Street. This is the location formerly known as Night Sky. A D5 permit is for spirituous liquor for on-premise consumption only. Beer and wine for on-premise or off-premise in original sealed containers until 2:30 AM. Based on information on the state's website, there are currently two D5 permits available for Troy, with one application pending. Objections must be filed by February 18th, 2014. The Police Department has advised that the city has no basis of objection to the license based on the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Mr. Brock Heath has the next report from the Recreation and Parks Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it. On January 6, 2014, this committee met to consider recommending an agreement related to the 2014 Troy Strawberry Festival, including the festival location. TSF has requested permission to expand the festival to incorporate the downtown area, as well as continue to hold festival activities at the levee location, Hobart Arena parking lot and the stadium parking lot. Recommendation: it is this recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement regarding the Troy Strawberry Festival to be held within the levee area and downtown during 2014. This is respectfully submitted by Mrs. Oda, Mr. Tremblay, and then myself, Mr. Heath, as the Chairman of the Recreation and Parks Committee.
Are there any questions from council on this?
Madam Chair, I don't have a question, but I do have a request. And I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do that or not, but I would like to table this for a vote until the next meeting so that more organizations may be able to comment. I just received two new emails, which I think most of council received today also. And there may be some others that need to be contacted for input into the potential move downtown.
Thank you for the explanation. And I think when we read the ordinance at that time, then you can make that request and let council make a decision on that.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. Our next report is from the Safety and Health Committee and Chairperson, Mrs. Robin Oda.
On January 2nd and January 14th, this committee, Safety and Health Committee, met to discuss a resolution supporting efforts in the Miami Valley to encourage regional sustainability and supporting the Dayton Region Green Initiative. As discussed in the detailed report, we were advised that the goals stated within the draft legislation are reflective of the region and not incumbent upon Troy. And we understand that some goals are already the practice of the city, such as meeting the 25% recycling rate, planting trees as part of the Tree City USA criteria, and distributing council and committee packets paperless. It was also discussed that there are no punitive aspects for not carrying out the goals of the resolution. There was a minority and a majority recommendation. The majority recommendation, the undersigned committee members support the concept of the Green Initiative and with the understanding that the resolution of support does not constitute a commitment of the city to implement goals or to any cost, that there are certain elements of such initiative now being done by the City of Troy, and there are no punitive aspects of such resolution of support. We recommend council approve the resolution of support. This was respectfully submitted by Mr. Clark and Mr. Heath. The minority recommendation, the undersigned supports a much more general concept of the Green Initiative. However, as the undersigned finds that the wording of the resolution and the business certification opens the door for more intrusion into business and is gratuitous in that Troy already embraces some of the goals set forth, the undersigned committee chair recommends that the resolution of support not be approved by council. Respectfully submitted by myself, Robin Oda.
Are there any questions from council on this report?
Madam President, I have a couple of questions. I was going through the Exhibit B information, and it drove me to the website for Green America certified businesses. Are the qualifications for receiving a Green America, are they quantitative or are they subjective? I look at some of these and actively using their business as a tool for positive change. I don't understand what that means. What kind of positive change are we talking?
Mr. Titterington, do you wish to comment on that?
Well, I think in answer to your question, I think it is largely subjective. Again, the resolution is in support, not so much specifically to what Exhibit B says, but the overall concept of green, sustainability, environmentally responsible, those objectives.
But are they the driving?
I can't tell you what a tool for positive social change is as an objective quantitative measure. I don't know that there is one.
Let's say for a moment that this does not pass. Can a business in Troy still become Green America certified? In going to the website, they have an action page. And on the action page, they target businesses on there that are not Green Initiative. And there's companies like Giardelli Chocolate, Dean Foods, but then they also shout out to, or speak to three banks that do business in Troy. They speak to Fifth Third Bank, they speak to US Bank, and they speak to, there's one other one. Wachovia?
Yeah.
They speak to Wachovia also. And they want them to become more, what are they looking for? More social change from them. I don't know if we want to put our fingerprint on, or align ourselves with this business when we have businesses in Troy that they are specifically targeting. Does that make sense?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Phillips?
Sure. In doing the same research Mr. Swazer did, I've come to the same conclusions because it's a very wide shotgun effect of what they're attacking. And they're asking for, if you will, grassroots movement or using this organization to attack the coal industry and other industries that are listed on this Green Initiative, or Green America page. And I can't see supporting something like that coming from another area with the political bent that they have. And I just cannot support that.
Okay. Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. I would just, just a brief statement, and I would say that in today's business economy, it's quote unquote "good business" to be green. It's also good business to do the best that you can to save all the dollars in a socially equitable way that you can. And again, I'm not so sure that we need to pass legislation to go ahead and do that. We are already doing that as a city and as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
I just have one more question. When you go to the goals outlined on the actual ordinance, they're looking for 30,000 Facebook fans within the next three years, is that right? Who gets the information from that? Does that go to Green America, or is that just for us?
That is a, the Montgomery County/Dayton Regional Facebook page. So that is a regional effort.
It's MVRPC or something different?
No, it's something different.
Okay. I have nothing else.
Madam President, one last comment. Do we win an award if we get 30,000 Facebook people? I'm just asking. You know, I don't get the concept of that. Thanks.
Madam President, in passing the resolution, is it going to make major changes to what we already do? Was, as I read through that, I felt like many, I think Troy does a very good job already of recycling, of being green, of having bike paths, all of those things. And a resolution is to maybe improve upon things, and is that really going to take place with this resolution? Is it going to make us make drastic changes more than what we've already done? I guess is the question.
I'd like to remind the council that this is a resolution that is making a, what hopefully would have been, a positive statement, in many ways reinforcing what we are already doing. The concerns that came out of the first committee meeting were such that we added, and we recommended, and a majority of the committee is now recommending to you, Section 1, which says that the Troy City Council supports feasible and cost-effective efforts that enhance regional sustainability. We were requested to consider legislation in support of the region's efforts. This does not take away anything that we have done for many years. This does not take away, it does not de-emphasize anything that we are doing as a community. It is being a positive part of the overall regional effort to promote the greater Dayton region as a responsible, forward-thinking, environmentally friendly, if you will, region. That's as far as this resolution was intended to go. And as we rewrote and tried to soften some of this, we felt that this did that. Again, reemphasizing that we are already doing a lot of this, and you're absolutely correct, we came up with several examples at the last committee meeting. We continue every year on budget cycle, off-budget cycle, to continue to come up with new ways to be cost-effective and yet sensitive to the environment. This resolution only reinforces those efforts, formalizes it, puts it down in writing, and broadcasts that we are sensitive and we want to be part of the region in looking at these overall goals and objectives.
Thank you.
One more comment if I may. In response to that, perhaps we could redraft the resolution to indicate that we are standalone and not necessarily being coupled with any of the organizations that are listed on that website or any of its supporting documents. Because when we support this, we're supporting that entire document, and I can't do that.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next report is from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Mr. Bobby Phillips.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On January 13th, the committee met to consider recommending the resolution of necessity for the Phase 8 of the sidewalk replacement program. Phase 8 includes 134 parcels in the area east of the spur, railroad north of Main Street, west of Mulberry, and south of the river. These property owners would be given until April 4 to obtain a permit for the work. Thereafter, the repairs would be made by the city. The recommendation of the committee is to proceed, and that the resolution of necessity be prepared regarding the sidewalks in Phase 8 of the sidewalk replacement program. And this was respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Any questions from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee? Thank you. Our last report is from the Utilities Committee and Chairman, Mr. Doug Tremblay.
Thank you, Madam President. Utilities Committee met on January 14th of this year about bidding water line, bidding water line projects. On January 14th, this committee met to consider recommending bidding authorization for some water line projects. $3 million was budgeted this year for a number of water line projects improvements. Some of those projects have been designed to the point that estimates are available for bidding purposes. It is the recommendation of this committee that the legislation be prepared authorizing the bidding of four water line projects described in the detailed report at a cost not to exceed $1,370,000. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Clark, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chairman of the Utilities Committee.
Any questions from council on this report? Thank you, Mr. Tremblay. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Livingston, our law director, is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing council.
Mayor, Madam President, council. Neil Webster, President of the Senior Citizens Club. And I was here on their behalf for the Strawberry Festival. I wanted to get the input of what was going on, so I can take it back to our zoning board. And I can wait until the next meeting, whatever you decide to do there.
Kathy McIntosh, 1323 Surrey Road. I've sent all of you an email about our concerns about the Strawberry Festival. Just a couple items, and I know the seniors is kind of feeling the same way we are. We're a little landlocked where we are. We have the ability to move our stuff and our equipment, not our baking equipment, but our sales stuff, other places. But as I indicated to you the other day, it is a concern for us. The last time we moved, we had over a year to plan, and now we have about four months to plan. So it's kind of a tight frame for us. I'm also concerned that if we continue to keep moving the festival site different places, that the customer base, not only for us but for the Strawberry Festival in general, is not going to know where things are. It's as if, when I was a kid and I went to the fair, I always knew where the cane toss booth was. When I come to the Strawberry Festival, I always know where the wind chimes are. But now those things are moving, and I'm concerned for the festival and obviously for us, because that's one of our major fundraisers, that we're going to start to lose our customer base. And if we've been paying attention, we know that the Heritage Festival has had some issues, probably not the same as ours, but we want to make sure that we continue to have this successful event. So I'm coming here today to ask you to kind of consider maybe tabling the vote until the next council meeting, so that the Strawberry Festival has an opportunity to talk with the people that it concerns and see, you know, if our fears can be fixed in some way and maybe try to work together to come out with some good solutions for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments at this point?
Good evening. Eric Roder, 189 Little John Road in Troy. Just wanted to bring this to you guys' attention. I've done a little bit of research, and in the past four years alone, over 10-plus festivals in the state of Ohio have disbanded. Most recently, the City Folk Festival in Dayton, and very recently, the Pickle Heritage Festival. For various reasons, including lack of growth, volunteer community support, lack of financial commitment and operating funds. It's our goal as the Troy Strawberry Festival to, as always, focus on all the nonprofit organizations and do that. With the limited access, you know, of using the levee, it limits the disabled visitors to come to our festival. And after the 2012 festival, we heard from many people who had not been to the festival in many years that they could come and enjoy the festival. Also with, you know, the concern of the location we have presented with what we're going to do on the levee versus downtown, to help with that situation. And we also understand that, you know, making our festival easy for setup and tear down, if there is an issue with the weather, it would make it a lot easier. We understand that there could be issues with the heat, but as well as we both know, the festival at the levee has those same problems. So no matter where the festival is at, we're going to have problems with the weather. I just think as an overall festival for the potential of growth in moving downtown, you know, it's an opportunity to be able to try to grow the festival. If we leave it where it's at, you know, we could potentially hurt ourself in the future for potential growth. It's, you know, we looked at it as being a one-time deal for this year, maybe going in the in the future, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. We'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R4, 2014.
Resolution number R4, 2014. Resolution approving the application of RNE LLC for assistance from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund and declaring an emergency. This would be a loan in the amount of $470,000 as recommended by the Loan Review Committee. First reading.
Are there any questions from council on the resolution?
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R5, 2014.
Resolution number R5, 2014. Resolution authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a lease agreement for the barn in the park. This has been recommended to be rebid by the Board of Park Commissioners. Current agreement has expired. First reading.
Is there any discussion from council on the resolution?
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R5, 2014.
Resolution number R5, 2014. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a lease agreement for the barn in the park. This has been recommended to be rebid by the Board of Park Commissioners. Current agreement has expired. First reading.
Is there any discussion from council on the resolution?
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R5, 2014.
Resolution number R5, 2014. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a lease agreement for the barn in the park. This has been recommended to be rebid by the Board of Park Commissioners. Current agreement has expired. First reading.
Is there any discussion from council on the resolution?
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R7, 2014.
Resolution number R7, 2014. Resolution declaring the necessity of Phase 8 of the sidewalk replacement program in the city of Troy. This will provide notification to the property owners in the designated area of the intent to have the program. First reading.
Any discussion from council?
Move to suspend, please.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to adopt, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R8, 2014.
Resolution number R8, 2014. Resolution supporting the rehabilitation of Staunton Commons II, an affordable housing development located at 500 Staunton Commons Drive, Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This will allow the owner of the property to apply for tax credits. It will have no impact on the city of Troy expenses or income. This is the first reading.
Any questions from council on the resolution?
Move to suspend, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mrs. Snee to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R9, 2014.
Resolution number R9, 2014. Resolution supporting efforts by the MAMA Valley to encourage regional sustainability and the Dayton Regional Green Initiative. First reading.
Any comments from council?
Madam President, I would like to request that we take this to another reading, please.
Are there any further comments or discussion?
I would support that.
So then, take that to a second reading. That completes the resolutions. We'll move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance 05, 2014.
Ordinance number 05, 2014. Ordinance subordinating a mortgage lien for Troy Business Park LTD and declaring an emergency. This subordinates the city's loan to a different bank. It makes no difference in the city's current loan balance. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council on this ordinance?
Move to suspend, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 06, 2014.
Ordinance number 06, 2014. Ordinance authorizing changes for the 2014 Troy Strawberry Festival and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement therefore. This would provide for the Troy Strawberry Festival to make an upfront payment to the city of Troy of $20,000 for the estimated additional overtime cost and would also have a dual location, downtown and the levee. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council on the ordinance?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure whether tabling this would be the appropriate thing or carrying this over to a second reading in order to give us more time to get citizen input into this. So I'm going to kind of leave that.
Yeah, I'll take it to a second reading.
Okay, then that would be my motion. I'd support that motion, Madam Chair.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded. I guess we don't have to do-
No, we would not, to just have another reading.
Any other objections? And that will go to a second reading. That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
Only to advise the elected officials of the notice to, the requirement to file the financial disclosure statement. Information was emailed to you today that you can download the information online. That is all.
Thank you. Mayor Beeman, do you have any comments this evening?
No comments tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of brief ones. First of all, we are getting some questions regarding Christmas trees. We are picking those up. Please be patient, keep them on the curb. We will get them. We are getting them as we have a minute or two in between salting, plowing, and dealing with the weather. Speaking of which, just an update, actually, it's an update from the items of interest. So far this year, we have spent approximately $75,000 as well in regular and overtime, including spreading 900 tons of salt. Compared to last season, we're about a month ahead or more than we were last season, so hopefully that means an early thaw and not an extended winter season. Why is everybody laughing? I'm serious here, people. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
May I ask Mr. Titterington a question? Okay. How do we stand on salt? I saw today that there were some communities down in Dayton that were running out at this point and sharing-
We still have some in the bins. We also have another order coming in, so we'll be fine. We should be fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Livingston, any comments this evening?
Nothing seen this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Stickell, any comments this evening?
I have no comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would just encourage, request that the Strawberry Festival speak to the senior citizens and to the Troy Band and to any other groups that come forward and try to iron out the questions and things that have come forward before we have our next meeting in a couple of weeks, so that we can move forward with this. Thank you. Any comments from council members tonight?
Madam Chair, I have one question for Mr. Titterington. As to the Rumpkey trash pickup issue, you were going to have a conversation with them over scheduling and holidays and other things. Did they come back with a positive response off of our concerns?
Well, the concern was communication. The schedule is already set. It was just the emergencies that we had two weeks ago, I guess, now? And making sure that we were involved in communications, there were some issues with vehicles and with some staffing issues that they had. I think we've ironed those out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.